We'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us, and I'm sure you're delighted that it is much warmer outside today than it has been the past couple of weeks. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening. We will get started with roll call. Mr. Secretary.
Board members are present and accounted for.
Fantastic, thank you. If you'd all rise, Roger McMichael, our CEO of Finance is going to lead us into pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we have public participation. I would like to remind everyone who's choosing to speak this evening to, when we announce your name, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to share your thoughts. There are lights on the podium, so when you get close to 30 minutes, or 30 minutes, 30 seconds, the little yellow light will come on and the red light will beep at the three minute. And we will begin with Bob Dyer.
Hello, my name's Bob Dyer. I live at 12708 Keywood Drive in Carmel, and I'm a bus driver for the school district, and I'm the vice president of the Bus Drivers Association. Have been for three or four years now. It's an easy election to win. I want to specifically speak to the $2,500 bonus that we somehow read about in the newspaper today, and I know this is in the minutes for discussion later on today. We don't, we, the bus drivers, and I can only speak for the many that came to me today and told me how they didn't think this was a good idea. We really don't think it's a good idea. A, we feel it's too much money to pay for a job for a bonus. B, paying it out in three months would be, would be like, would be like Quicken Loans. I mean, it's kind of silly, paying it out that fast. If a bonus is necessary, $500 is a number we think is somewhat more appropriate in this type of situation. It costs us, and I checked with Amy Bevan today, $1,200 to $1,500 to train a driver with time included and money you lay out and things like that. You know, if we could, if our advertisers could perhaps stress the fact that we were looking for trained drivers, people who not only have a CDL but have a bus driver ability and bus driver training, we think that might help bring some people in. The other thing that we don't want to get into with the $2,500, we don't feel it'd be good to get into a competition with our other neighboring districts and start poaching people from them. People would come, perhaps for $2,500. Another idea we kicked around today was use the $2,500 to try and reduce the number of retirees that leave at the end of 10 years. Perhaps if you offered a driver who wanted to leave $2,500 to stay for another year and give it to them at the end of the year, that might be a more profitable idea for us. We think it might be a more profitable idea for the, for the school district. The other thing that we came up with was perhaps slow down the purchase of new buses. We seem to purchase 11, 12 new buses every year. The bus drivers love it. I mean, we always get a nice bus, and we have mechanics who are fabulous. They keep our buses in great running order. We don't have any real major issues with buses. But if we took that money, say, and didn't buy three or four buses, gave benefits back to the bus drivers that don't have benefits, that might make the job more enticing for people. And one of the things we understand is that when we tell a prospective employee there are no benefits to this job, they lose interest pretty quickly. So. And the other thing, one more topic, this has been pretty negative on morale in the bus driving group. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dyer. And Mr. Dyer is the last to speak this evening. Next, we will move along to the district update, Spotlight on Excellence. And to that, we'll turn to Dr. Wall and our Clay Middle School students.
We're very fortunate, board members, to have with us tonight members of the Clay Middle School Student Body. I'm going to invite Todd Crosby, principal of Clay Middle School, up to the podium to introduce the teachers and the students that are going to be presenting this evening and being Spotlight on Excellence in regards to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Todd, if you'd come up, please.
First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Wall, school board personnel, and also all the community for attending this evening. Tonight, we'll take a few moments to recognize excellence and student excellence at that and leadership. Tonight, we have an opportunity, and it gives me great pleasure as principal at Clay Middle School, to introduce really some awesome people, both adults and students, as they've kind of looked forward to, you know, their experience with Make-A-Wish, but also how they redefine seeking greatness. I guess very quickly, before I introduce, just a couple of things to read very quickly. What does it mean to be the star? When we stop for a moment and think about all the times throughout our lives that we have been chosen to play a major role in something, are we doing it to be a star or simply part of the story? Some might argue that being part of something great is just as satisfying as being the main star. Our students never asked to be the main stars, rather, they just wanted to be a part of something where they knew they could have a huge impact on someone else and change their life. Isn't that what being great is all about? Tonight, I have six sixth graders that have been chosen by their team of over 150 students to represent Clay with their experience with Make-A-Wish Foundation. These students have exemplified what it means to be a Clay Trojan and how it truly means and what it means to truly pay it forward. They live out the Clay way each and every day. They're responsible, they're respectful, they're ready to learn, and most of all, they're full of pride. The children that Make-A-Wish Foundation helps long for a wish. They wish to be healthy, like other children, where they can do all the things that other children their age can do. Tens of thousands of volunteers, donors, and supporters advance the Make-A-Wish vision to grant the wish of every child with a life-threatening medical condition. In the United States and its territories, on average, a wish is granted every 37 minutes. As I read through the mission of Make-A-Wish, the belief that a wish experience can be a game changer is the core of the organization's belief. They say that this one belief helps to guide them and inspire them to grant wishes that change the lives of kids they serve. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Kelly Spidell, representing Team Avengers, and the following students: Connor Hegy, Isabella Bowie, Reagan Hadley, Grant Brickin, Emerson Carlisle, and Karen Fecht. I also would like to introduce Kelsey from Make-A-Wish Foundation, who has joined us this evening. As they, I would like for them to, now, if they could, please come up and talk a little bit about their experience and how they kind of put it all together and organized it, and then we'll give out certificates. But if you guys could come on up now.
Hi, I'm Kelly Spidell, and I have been one that has listened to the Request-a-thon on WZPL for many years and a donator and for Make-A-Wish, and I have always thought it would be fantastic to involve a group of students. And when we were presented with teams again this year, it was a perfect opportunity to make a smaller group so we could do this. And so we, we talked about it, and we set some goals as a group, all 150 of us. We watched some video clips of Make-A-Wish kids, and we decided that we were all in and we wanted to do it, and we talked about what a reasonable amount of money would be to try to raise, being that it was our first year, and what were some ways that we were going to do this. And I can't say enough for these kids. We did put an online page together to help as well, but the things that they did at school, I'm going to let them talk about that a little bit. But we were able to raise over $6,200 and grant a wish, which is what we wanted. So it's been just an amazing experience, and I truly cannot say enough for these kids and what they've done. So I'm going to let them kind of speak as to the details of what we did.
My name is Emerson Carlisle, and the question I got is, what is the thing that you will remember most about granting a wish for another child? And I had was, the thing that I will remember most about working with Make-A-Wish is that we all came together to help grant a child's wish, and that everyone was eager to participate in this event that was aimed at helping a child in need. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bella Bowie, and my question was, what kinds of activities did your team do to get people interested in cause? We sold Star Suckers at lunch and at a basketball game. Team 62 also sold thankful notes around Thanksgiving time and could write friendly and why they are thankful, friendly notes and why they are thankful for their friends. We also sold candies and Make-A-Wish tattoos. Ms. Herman also sold and made her amazing cookies. Some students during Core Plus sold homemade treats and desserts, friendship bracelets and pencil grips. Students also brought in donations where there was, there was also an online website where people could donate. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reagan Hadley, and my question was, how do you feel you were given opportunity by your team of teachers to impact another person's life? I feel so grateful to be given this opportunity from my teachers to help raise money to grant a wish for children, because being able to help make an impact on a sick child's life makes me feel really good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Fecht, and my question was, what impact did doing this service learning project have on you as a sixth grader? And as a sixth grader, we take lots of things for granted, like we come home after spending eight hours with our fellow students and friends, and we come home, watch TV, have a family dinner, go to sleep in our own bed. And Make-A-Wish children who are in the hospital can't do that. They might not even see their friends too often, which is really saddening. So when I got the choice to be able to help out with Make-A-Wish, it really opened my eyes to show me how much I took for granted. Thank you.
My name is Grant Brickin, and my question was, if I was given an opportunity to get involved in Make-A-Wish again, would I do it again? And I said yes, because of what Clay does to help the kids in need and not only benefiting the kid in need, but benefiting their whole family, because they are, the kids are the really ones who need the treatment and spend a lot of time in the hospital. But Make-A-Wish gives them hope and gives them what they need and what they really want. Thank you.
My name is Connor Hegy, and my question was, what kinds of fact did you learn about the Make-A-Wish Foundation? So first, the Make-A-Wish Foundation has over 27 active volunteers today in the United States, and Make-A-Wish grants a wish almost every 37 minutes. The average goal of a wish is almost $36,000. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Lichnam. I'm a development officer with Make-A-Wish Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana. I'm also a Carmel Greyhound, class of 2007. Make-A-Wish is incredibly, incredibly personal. My brother Mackenzie, who was class of '09 at Carmel High School, had a wish granted, actually while he was attending Clay Middle School. And so this is kind of full circle for me to be talking to you today, so sorry if it catches me off-guard emotionally, but we are just incredibly grateful for the work that these kids did. We have students all across Indiana, which is the region we cover out of our Indianapolis office, that fundraise like this, but they did it on a whole nother level. They were so bought in, I was constantly getting questions from Kelly, that I don't even get when I go speak to companies of grown men and women. So they were all in, they thought of, you know, incredible things to ask that wasn't just about the specific child, but the entire experience, and that's what we're here to do. You know, like one of you said so well, a lot of our kids don't get to lead the normal lives that these children do, and it's our job to come in and make sure that the entire family gets an experience that stays with them. So I wanted to let you guys know that we would love to continue this partnership. It's been a goal, obviously personally and professionally, to get into Carmel Clay Schools. There are children every year in the school system that benefit from our program, and we are not allowed to tell them about you because, tell them to you, because their families choose to go through it privately. Hamilton County in general just has a lot of families that don't want to be publicly showcased for their stories through Make-A-Wish, and we honor that. But we have about 15 families every year that we could share with you. So I brought some literature so that you guys can see some faces. You probably know about Brooks, he's getting a lot of attention. He just went to kindergarten today at Cherry Tree, and we're so excited to be sending him to San Diego. And then also Jordan Walker is one of our kiddos. He's in the middle schools, and he went to Spain to go see a soccer game. So we, we are just grateful that Clay got on board, and we'd love to see more of it happen. They did it so effortlessly. I know Kelly might disagree with that, but they, they did things that were so genuine and heartfelt, and they kept pushing themselves to get to that goal. It's, you know, it's about $8,000 to grant a wish, and obviously Spain costs a little bit more than that, but they just kept going. They wanted to, you know, hit their goal, and then they hit it, and they wanted to continue, and that's, that's what we like to see, and we're honored to partner with the Smiley Morning Show to do the Request-a-thon. This December will be the 20th year for that event, which is pretty remarkable. So we've got some major goals, and we're going to be going to all the communities in Indianapolis to see who can raise the most money for this major milestone for the 20th event. And personally, I'd love to see Carmel in one of those, you know, top spots. So if there's anything we can do to get the other schools involved, you know, share these two stories that we're allowed to share, we would love to, because I think that, you know, with this spirit and with these guys leading the way, there's a lot of great work that could come from it, but we are grateful for everything they have done and just really appreciate the opportunity to tell you about it, so.
Thank you very much. I think Dr. Wall has some very special certificates for each of our students. Does the board have any questions for?
No, just comments.
Okay, please go ahead.
I just think it's very wonderful what you all have accomplished. I know there was a special on Sunday, last night, on 60 Minutes, I think it was, and it was talking about the Make-A-Wish and all the students that have benefited from it, and it was very heartwarming. So it was neat to see that you went through all this and did such a great job. Thank you.
I'd also like to add that it, as a board, it's exciting to see our students take on this type of a leadership role, a leadership role that is, you went beyond what the expectations are of the classroom, and your heartfelt love that you're giving towards and for these families, it's priceless. So we are, we are very excited for you and excited that you had an opportunity to learn and grow from this experience as well. And thank you, Kelly, for leading the, leading the team.
It's really neat to hear about middle school teaming, back in the middle schools, and a very positive unintended consequence of middle school teaming. Kelly, thank you for leading these young men and young ladies, and continue your good work. You've only begun. And the board would like to shake your hand and thank you as well. Isabella, if you'd go across.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is that a deal?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm going to put her next.
Hello, are you?
Yeah. Leila, if I might, Maggie's got work yet to do tonight, so if I could indulge the board and move her presentation up to now from the superintendent's report, it would be appreciated. She's got work yet to do because she's taking care of families. Would that be okay?
That would be okay. Would it be appropriate, is it, how long?
Three minutes.
Okay, then we'll have a break after, yes, and after Ms. Figgy.
Yeah, it's a three-minute video, and I just, she's going to give us an update on the Carmel Youth Assistance Program, which is exciting. This three-minute video captures the essence of the program, and then Maggie will just give an update on service to Carmel families, so about five minutes.
Okay, that'll be great. And then once that is complete, so students and those who are in the audience, once we are complete here, we will take about a five-minute break. So if you'd like to leave with your families, you could do that, but first, we're going to go ahead with Ms. Figgy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Real quick, I do want to say that I heard you guys on the radio in December, which was really fun. Yeah, you guys did a great job. Okay. Yeah, thanks to Dr. Wall for allowing me to come and just do a quick update. I came and spoke to the school board when Carmel Youth Assistance was just launching, and we've made a lot of pretty great progress in the last four or five months, so appreciate that opportunity to come, just share that with you. This video was done by the Legacy Fund and given to us so that we can go out and share our story in a much more eloquent way than what I could share it probably, so I want to give you guys, or show you guys this video that just kind of shares some statistics with you too about Hamilton County as a whole, and then I'll just zero in on Carmel for a few minutes after that.
When you look across the courtroom and you see the loss of potential, there's just an ache in your heart when you walk away from that. In many cases, these kids are without alternative. They don't know what else they can do.
In 1998, matters that would be settled in the juvenile justice system started to trend upward. Based upon that forecast, Hamilton County built a juvenile detention facility to house 50 offenders. In 2009, the Youth Assistance Program launched, and what we saw was a significant decrease in the number of children that were entering the juvenile justice system in Hamilton County.
You can't build a wall high enough to keep out darkness. The only way you can keep darkness out is to give it light. Youth Assistance reaches out to those kids and says, there's another way.
Well, the way to stop it is to get to the children before it even starts.
It gives those kids an opportunity to connect with a lifeline that doesn't involve juvenile hall. Youth Assistance is comprised of essentially three elements. The first, law enforcement, of crime prevention. The second is going to where the kids live, schools. They're the first they are going to see a problem. And then finally, you need a community to support this. Youth Assistance is fundamentally a grassroots program, and it has to be in order to be successful.
School guidance counselors send us referrals for the children. We then meet with the families, plug them into services, and help ensure that they are meeting the needs of the families.
In many cases, their families may not even know what the gaps are, but Youth Assistance identifies those and connects those families to the services that are already provided in the county.
It's exciting to be a part of the government coming together with the municipalities, with the community, all of us working to ensure that the world is a better place for our children in our very own community.
So what we try to do is make it so the teacher can get back to what they're hired to do, and that's to teach in a class and to love their children.
It's because of the donors, it's because of the Hamilton County Endowment that we were able to reach out in this way and provide what model of leadership we did provide.
We wouldn't have been able to start without Legacy. We wouldn't have been able to start without the vision that they had for us and to help us through that.
Over the last several years, we've seen astonishing results. We've reversed a vertical trend and made it a declining, nearly vertical trend. With twice the population of 15 years ago, we have less as a gross number of children who are being adjudicated and convicted of crimes in this county. That's stunning.
We now are in the six school districts of Hamilton County. We are in Zionsville, and we're in Shelby County, and we have right now waiting 10 other counties, and Marion County is one of those counties.
If you provide a lifeline to get out of that mess, they'll take it, and we're happy that we were able to help provide it.
And we're going to do that, and that's, as long as I have breath, that's what I'm going to do.
So like I said, I want to, that's, you know, a video about Hamilton County as a whole, but I do want to just zero in on the progress we've made in Carmel very quickly. When I came to speak to you before, we did not have our board of directors in place. I'm happy to announce.
Whatever assets or treasures we have really belong to God, and it's, we're temporarily the steward of those assets. It's our job to invest them and reinvest them.
And the organizational side of things, and they're even divided into subcommittees, as you can see.
Sue and I were both blessed to be raised by loving, nurturing, caring parents and households where we were encouraged to be selfless. I think those roots of learning that you can create joy from helping others have really laid a foundation for our philanthropy that's been very important for both of us.
It's always been front and center for us. My parents have always included my sister and I.
I would characterize my parents as loving. I feel like they always modeled doing the right thing.
It's who they are, and it became kind of who I am, and I think that's the ideal way of parenting, is to set an example for your kids that they follow.
Just at an early age, I felt this responsibility to try to, try to give back and to work hard and just try to make the world a better place.
We've gone through a transition in our philanthropy, and we can select and deliberately invest energy, time, treasure in places where we can have an impact.
The first is breaking the cycle of poverty and how to sort of help people become more self-sustaining. Healthcare, so access to quality healthcare for those who otherwise might not have it. Education, especially focused on the higher education world, and then the fourth is animal conservation and environmentalism.
The decision to give your time, treasures, and talents is a personal decision.
I've been drawn a lot to sort of the poverty category in my opinion, and so Shepherd Community Centers are very important causes to me personally and to my family.
Sarah, of course, is actively engaged with the Money Trust and with a number of other organizations.
You know, I'm thankful that my parents opened our eyes early on to how we can recognize a need that others might have and how we can be a part of the solution.
It's not looking for recognition or doing it because you feel like it's the right thing to do. It's just an automatic reaction because you want to do it.
We make more than 25 grants a year, which means we stay in touch, actively engaged in conversation or participation, both with its endowed resources and with its donor-advised funds. Legacy Fund has set the bar very high, providing, providing an example of what a community foundation can do to inspire progress.
It's not really about how much money you make or what you accomplish, it's, you know, how much love do you have and how much love do you share.
Yeah, I certainly feel like it's with pride that I would pay my contributions to our subcommittees.
And then our two big goals for 2016 would be to have our own in-house mentoring and tutoring program, and then also have some support groups for families, so. Just kind of a little vision into our future, and that's it. But I want to thank you guys again for the opportunity and all the support that the schools have given so far.
As a kid, you had it drilled in your head to stay in school. Get a degree, everyone said. Of the way. said, of the 1.1 million jobs projected in Indiana.
We have questions across the board. Well, we applaud you for all your work, and we, I know I've talked with Teri Anker a number of times in Judge Nation, and am very excited that we have this program here in Carmel Clay Schools, and look forward to, I guess, our future of less individuals ending up in the court system.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I'm gonna put a plug in, it's exciting that, when I found out about the program last year and met with Teri and then Judge Nation, that we could get government, schools, and the court system working together for the community for early intervention, and that's what Maggie's title is and her role, and thank you for your service to the families and the kids. But to see, I'm an ex-officio on the board for Carmel Youth Assistance Program, and to see the board members genuinely wanting to do and give back to the community. When we, as a board, become not-for-profit status, the intent is for it to be self-sufficient on money coming in, to take care of Maggie and the resources needed for families. The vision would be that, as I said to Judge Nation, we want to put them out of work for seeing youth in their courtrooms, and we want, you know, probably another Maggie to assist with the families in Carmel Clay Schools and the young men and young ladies. So it's exciting, it's meaningful, and it's giving back to the community in a way that we know makes a difference. The fewer kids we have in the juvenile system and the court system, the better chance we have for them to be productive citizens, and that's really, you know, our main objective as a school, to make sure that our kids go on to be productive members of society. So Maggie, thank you so much. Great work.
Well, now, break. So those who are here, if they would like to head home to do other activities, that would be fine. I do believe, students, real quick, we have Jennifer Schwab is going to take one picture of you guys together, so we can post that, if you don't mind. So-
Where do you want?
We'll just do it against the globe.
Oh, that's a good idea. And parents, if you want to go back a moment?
And Kelsey and Kelly, if you would like to, if you don't mind, jumping in there with them, so it's a nice group picture. And Mr. Crosby?
Sure, we'll get one of students first, and then we'll get- Come at three. One, two, three. Waiting. Okay. On either side, just like that is perfect. Okay? One, two, three. Okay, look at me and everyone for one picture. One, two, three. All right, come with your parents. Anyone who's here happy? One more. I wish I had everyone stood this way just a little bit now. Perfect. All right. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
We will continue with our meeting. Next on our agenda is consent. We have a motion to approve consent.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have discussion. Our first item of discussion is our first reading of policy 3600. And with that, we will turn to Mrs. Knowles.
Yes, 3600, is it gonna be on the screen or not? No? Okay. Non-resident employee enrollment benefit. We, as a school corporation, had originally put this-
Is your mic on?
Oh, sorry. We, as a school corporation, had originally put this into place because we felt this was, would benefit our own employees. Then, after we did that, the state of Indiana implemented the same right to employees of the schools, and that became Code 2026-11-6.5. So in reviewing that, our lawyers had recommended that we add in, because in the code now, part-time employees also qualify for this benefit. So substitute teachers are the only ones who do not qualify for this benefit. So that is why we have changed this policy, to read with the exception of substitutes, taking out part-time employees, and added employee benefit. And completed applications will be reviewed by school administration as they are received, and will be subject to approval by the superintendent or his or her designee. So that's the only language that we have changed in this policy, and we are bringing it to you for first reading.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I think, I guess first I'd like to thank the response that I got. We got a number of, that there are currently 136 students of non-resident employees enrolled in the district. And I guess my question would be that as long as those additional students are here on the days that are the count days, it doesn't cost the district any more money because we'd be getting funding through the state for that student? Is that correct?
Any other questions or clarifications? Well, great. We hope to bring this back to us at our February board meeting, not the workshop, but the board meeting. Next on the agenda, we have, doo-doo-doo-doo, signing bonus for the new bus drivers.
Okay, thanks, Leila. One of the things that we've reviewed with Roger and with Ryan is the challenge we face and the discussion we're gonna have tonight is a shared interest by the drivers, by the board, by administration, and the teachers. It's about the kids. This may seem to be about a bonus or about a bus. It's not about new buses, it's not about drivers, and we respect you guys for being here tonight and your report. It's about getting students to and from school safely, and I commend our bus staff and our bus fleet for doing that, from the mechanics up to Amy Bevan's scheduling, to Ron and Roger for all their efforts, and most importantly, the drivers, who are conscientious, kind, and considerate of our kids every day and get them to and from school. It's a very valuable position. I know the drivers know that I believe that, Roger believes that, and our goal and our challenge right now is to get drivers to do that. And I'll let Roger take it from there.
Yes, if I could just add a little background information, and I would echo everything that Dr. Wall said about our employees and our drivers. They have really done everything they can to collectively help us. They will get on the radio and volunteer to go pick up kids at, you know, when they know a bus is short. And they're paid by the day, so they're not paid by the hour. So now, at some point, we will compensate them additionally, but they're not really, that's not their focus. They're just wanting to help us get kids to school and get them there safely and get them there on time. So they have been a great, all of our drivers are just outstanding. But let me give you a little background. This has been a particularly difficult year for bus drivers. Bus drivers as a class of employees, most of the time have been in short supply. Now, we certainly have had times when we have enough bus drivers, and we're not always short like we are now. But this, but there's never been a real excess of bus drivers, at least not in Hamilton County and in Carmel specifically. So we start there, but this has been a particularly difficult year. We've been either running short or behind, or we would want to be virtually all of this school year. Things were better, frankly, when, you know, when the recession hit and jobs got scarce, we saw, you know, more interest in driving and so forth. But and so I don't know if the economy, how much that plays into it, but the fact is, is we're short of drivers, and we've tried at least everything we know at this, we're still trying different things. But to give a little background, last week, after four of our five mechanics drove, and two of our office staff, that, of course, all have license and are capable of driving, we still were short three drivers to where we literally had three buses that couldn't run, and which translates to about 300 kids late for school. And that was on the 20th and again on the 21st. So, and one of the things we saw when this report made the press, not entirely accurately, but nevertheless, we've already gotten interest, people calling, asking about, you know, what we're doing. Just the fact that we've got the publicity that we're short, I think, will help. Because one of the difficulties always is, is, you know, we advertise and do in a whole variety of places, but unless somebody that might be interested reads that ad, they don't know we're short of bus drivers. And one of the things we've seen is, is when it's on Channel 6 or in the Indianapolis Star, you know, in the paper, there's a lot of readership, a lot of viewing on television. And so just the publicity is, it would appear that that's helped us some. So I wanted to give that background. Currently, we have three drivers in training, so we can get them on board. That will help. We would like to have about 12 more. If we could hire 12 drivers tomorrow that were qualified, we would hire them. Couple of things that come to mind, as Bob mentioned about the fewer buses, unfortunately, and the board may know this, but there's a separate fund for bus purchases versus transportation, and so we can't co-mingle the funds. We can't use funds that otherwise would be available for buses to employ staff. We have sought input from the drivers. They would volunteer it anyhow, but we do respect their opinion, and we did talk to them, and not, I didn't hear anything that I was entirely surprised about. In fact, there's all of some of the conversations, we, you know, we had some good thoughts and good ideas that we'll consider as well. But since the report was written, for example, we've considered the fact that, number one, almost all the drivers that we hire do not come here ready to drive. They're, they've never driven a bus, they go into training. It takes about three weeks or four, if the driver's, or the trainee is very available, to get them trained and to be able to drive a bus. And as Bob said, it is about $1,200 to $1,500 to go through that training process. And unfortunately, I think, because they still don't know, you know, we can, they learn how to drive the bus. Usually, my experience has been that people are concerned that they couldn't drive that big bus, and what they should be concerned, what we really want to be concerned about, we can, they can be trained how to drive the bus, but if they can't, if they don't interact well with children, we can't train that very, we can give them some help. But that's the biggest piece. And so if you've never driven a bus with children, until you do, you don't really know. And some of the drivers, after they go through all that training, they don't stay very long because they realize that that's just not, they're just not cut out for that type of work. So we have considered and would amend this ultimately, before we'd ask you to act on it. Whereas, we would propose to, we would, I'm still sticking with the $2,500 for a driver that would come with a CDF, meaning, and also a bus experience where they could, you know, be ready to drive a bus. And $1,000 to those that, which would be, I expect will be most of them, $1,000 to one that comes that would require training. To address the issue of, you know, we're recognized too, that, you know, once you pay this, once you qualify and you pay this bonus, will they stay or will they just, will they leave after that? There's no way of knowing. But one thing we would do is, the minimum would be, you would, the driver would, before they'd receive the bonus, they would have to drive a minimum, they would have to drive three months, but given the time of the year, they would also still have to be employed and in good standing by September 15th in the fall. So we wouldn't want them to come and run the risk that they're gonna get the bonus before this school year's over, and then they wouldn't be here when school started. So we would put that qualifier in it so that not only three months, but also they would, they would still need to be an employee in good standing September the 15th. So the idea there would carry them over the summer. With regard to the cost, you know, I certainly don't have any particular insight on what a bonus ought to be or what might incentivize somebody and what may not. I do have a concern that if, if we put the amount and find out later that we conclude that it was not enough or that it didn't make any difference, then effectively what we've done is we've given out money to people that presumably would have applied for the job in the first place, and so we really have gotten no benefit from that. What ultimately we would suggest is that we would, we would put a cap of $35,000 and let us try this and see what happens. Certainly, you know, if something amazing happens and we fill 12 positions overnight, we will, one, feel that the incentive was an incentive, but we also, if, at the point, we would, you know, we're not looking to just spend more money than we need to. Regardless, we would stop at $35,000. But if we thought it was too much and we still needed, you know, we don't expect, even after we fill this, we know we'll have turnover. We've got 169 drivers or routes, and so we need more drivers than that to cover the absences and so forth. So we know there's a certain amount of turnover, and so we never get finished in terms of needing bus drivers because we'll have turnover. But certainly, after we reacted to and could see what impact this might have, we certainly would make adjustments if that would seem appropriate. If it's either, you know, so if we get such an overwhelming response, more than we need, you might say, then clearly if we came back to continue an incentive after we reached that cap, then we'd have something to, an experience to see what happened. And but if I'm, if we're going to air, honestly, I'd rather air on the high side and see an impact. And if we, by high, if it's by definition, then we'd get lots of response. If we air on the low side and don't see a response, then we'd be pretty well assured we've just wasted money. But more important than that, it also would prolong the shortage. And my first goal, and I'm sure that's yours as well, is to get out of a situation where children are late to school. Also concerned about our employees that are doing kind of double duty, the mechanics. They didn't sign on to drive a bus every day. They signed on to be the mechanic, and they're quite willing to, but they have, we require them to have a CDF license, so that qualifies them. But the fact that they're qualified, we do appreciate that they're willing to not only do the mechanic job, but also drive the bus, which means, you know, they're working overtime, but there's a point where they're tired of working overtime. And so I have some concern about that as well. Also, the two people in the office, they're both from our West Side facility, and when they're driving a bus, they're not in the office to do what they normally would do. And so that has some negative implications because unlike the mechanics, it's not a matter of working overtime, they just can't be in two places at once. And so there's some other issues. There's also some- There's also some financial impact in the sense of the overtime for the drivers, or for the mechanics and the office person that is paid hourly. So, whatever we might spend, should we move forward with an incentive, financially speaking, it's not a net cost, because if we had enough drivers, we would not be paying the overtime costs. So, I would share that with you as well. And so, if we put financially, if we put this into perspective, if we were, had, if the board saw fit to give us authority to try this, and, but also know that we would, it would be capped at $35,000. That's in a context of a transportation operation that approaches $9 million a year. And this would be, we would like, we would hope that this would be a one-time expense. It certainly would be an expense that we could control, because at any moment, we could, if we tried this, we could decide to stop doing it. We've considered things such as benefits, for example, and we discontinued benefits to bus drivers, and I believe in 2006. And when we did have benefits, a little less than a third of the drivers took the benefits, and we were spending over a quarter of a million dollars, and that was a recurring cost. And so, at the time, we discontinued benefits, the feeling was as if for over two-thirds of our drivers, even though benefits were offered, they apparently, they had access to insurance someplace else, so that benefit and that cost was meaningless to them. And so, our thinking was, is financially and as an employer, we would be more attractive to focus our financial resources on salary alone, recognizing that if, you know, we all need health insurance and so forth. So, it's not a matter of not needing it, it's a matter of whether you already have it and you can, or you can get it someplace else. Even at that quarter of a million dollars a year, and that was the cost a number of years ago, we were, I say, we were only contributing for our family plan about 25% of the cost, and therefore, the employee was paying the majority of the premium, which meant that that's just inviting negative risk. It's inviting, because if you could get insurance anyplace else, for, you know, for less money, you would. And most of our, most of our drivers did. Again, it's not that they didn't have insurance and don't have insurance, they just have other access that's financially better for them than what we were offering. So, in the world of insurance, the folks in that career would tell you that paying that small of a percentage is just not good business, because the cost is, and we're self-funded, as you know, so the cost is not the premium contribution, it's whatever the claims experience is. And that claims experience affects all of us in that insurance pool. So, anything that you do that might invite a high risk is not in the interest of all the people in the plan. So, some of these things we've, we have tried, and what we've seen since we discontinued benefits, a number of other districts are doing that because they can't afford it, for one thing. And later on, as we had circuit breakers and things that were depleting resources, increasingly, districts are just, you know, unable to fund all of those things, so they no longer do so. So, with that, I would respond to questions that you might have.
Couple of things I want to add before we get into that. We know they've spent about $7,000 on advertising the last seven months out of HR, and unfortunately, that's not filled the gap. The other thing that we talked about, we're very fortunate we have a mild winter, because when we didn't two years ago, we had multiple buses, spares out on the road on the west and east side, in inclement weather, in the event we had any type of bus that didn't want to go. That meant we had another bus ready to go, insured to get the kids at the bus stop if it's cold or ice or snow. We don't, right now, Roger's telling me, we don't have that wiggle room, because we're running double routes. So, we've got, like I said, a shared interest to get kids on buses. And as the write-up says, we're just trying to look for a non-permanent option to attract some candidates that will be not only good drivers, but good to our kids. And so, with that, entertain any questions.
Tricia.
We do have a couple of questions. I appreciate you saying our priority is to get the kids to school, since that's our first-listed guiding principle over there, and one of the things that I was looking at. But to the nuts and bolts, do we have any kind of estimate on the money we've spent so far this year on mechanic overtime that they had to do when they had to do double shift?
No, I don't. I didn't quantify that. I know that for some time, it's getting very regular now that they're driving. Not necessarily, we keep one back in the garage, and even at that, and the reason we do is if a bus breaks down, or if there's a minor accident where we need to take a bus to, you know, we have to have somebody to get the bus to replace the one that's out of commission. And as Nick said, if, you know, if the weather, if we had a really bad winter, that would be even more of a concern, because now we could have, when that bus breaks down, it can be pretty important to get another bus there as soon as possible, not only to get the kids to school, but if it's not running, it's cold and whatever, or in a bad place on the road and so forth. So, as I said, in recent times, I know we've had four out of the five that are driving pretty regularly. And so, if they're, if, we would say that, you know, the average day for, in the morning and the afternoons, three to four hours, about an hour and a half in the morning, maybe two hours, and same thing in the afternoon. So, when you start doing that, and then, you know, paying a mechanic's rate at time and a half, and their top rate's about $30 an hour, and so, which is more than, you know, the pay for the drivers is between, I think, $100 and $104 a day for the, excuse me, for the regular route. So, it's definitely a premium from the cost standpoint.
Okay, so is that, since this is a discussion item, is that a number that you could probably get an estimate to us?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Kathy, you have questions?
You said there were 169 routes. About how many bus drivers have we under employment right now?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many bus drivers do we have employed right now? Not counting mechanics and executives?
Well, I don't know specifically, because at any given time, including right now, we have a certain number that are employed, but they're off on a variety of leaves. They may have, they may be on a long-term medical leave, or even a short-term medical leave. And then we have day-to-day absences that aren't as significant as, you know, not a major illness necessarily, but they're, like any other employee group or employee, they're, from time to time, they would, they would be absent. As I said, when we have 169 daily routes, you know, 169 buses that we would run every day, and so...
We can get that number too.
I'd like to have that number.
But the, I was going to say that the, we are not able, never have been able to have a situation where, when a driver's absent, that we would just call in somebody to come in and substitute. We maintain, when we're staff, we will have a certain number of drivers that we will maintain as, that they'll come in in anticipation that we'll need them to drive. If we have drivers, if we have a good day where we have very minimal absenteeism, and we have drivers that we don't need for them to drive, then they generally are riding a bus to assist another driver.
Are the absences, where the reason the mechanics drive, and do we have any type of intentions, incentives, or anything to encourage people to show up for work?
Yes, yeah. In fact, I think that was maybe one of the drivers' recommendations, that we consider increasing that. I don't know if that came from one of the drivers or from our office staff, or administration in transportation, but we do have an incentive.
Okay. And then I have one more question, kind of, generally, the thing that bothers me the most about this is the amount and the three-month time period, and you've kind of delineated and said how that could break down.
Yeah.
There is a concern, I think, of taking people from others, but I also have a hard time justifying that they could take this money and then didn't leave. And even if they stay through September 15th, it's like, would we not be better served to come up with some kind of a plan where it's a regular thing for everyone if they have a good review? I mean, like, what if they, we're going to give them the signing bonus, is there a requirement that they have a good trial run, or they have a good report within a certain, like a highly effective rating?
Yes, I may not emphasize that enough, but the intent would be, and the requirement would be, is that they would, they would have to be employed, still employed by the middle of September, and they would have to be in good standing. Now, we would be more specific with what that meant, but that would be the idea, that they, they would have to demonstrate that they were, they were doing, you know, a very acceptable job and so forth.
I think I'm bothered too, because I don't know that we've ever done this with any other employee group.
We've not needed to with any other employee group. And I regret that we need to here, or needed to, at least, I think we need to do something. We've tried everything that collectively we can come up with, and we're still short. So, I'm open to any other ideas, wherever they come from, which is why, you know, we appreciate what some of our drivers have suggested. So, you know, we're all, I'm sure have the same goal, and that is to have enough bus drivers to keep kids from being late to school and so forth. It's just a matter, you know, is there anything we can do to get from here to there? And so, this was the idea that we had and still have, and, but we do think we can quantify it, and perhaps unless we can kind of try something, this is, this is an op, if we add insurance, for example, that's not something, even if we stop, you know, two weeks later, there's still runoff, because then the employee has access to the plan for at least 18 months under COBRA. If we say, well, we'll increase the salary schedules, well, we spend about $4 million a year for salaries, so you can do the math there, and if we, if we increase it 1% or 2%, I don't believe that would make much difference in terms of seeing enormous amounts of increased interest. So, if we increased it 10%, that's $400,000, and that's a recurring cost. We're not having a particular problem of drivers leaving, we don't believe. We're not seeing drivers leaving because of the pay in terms of it being too low. When drivers leave for salary, it's generally because they are leaving here to take a full-time job, a year-round job, and that, we certainly can't compete with that, given the hours for this job compared to if you worked 12 months a year and eight hours a day. So, we're not losing drivers to other districts. Rarely do we do that, does that happen. So, it's a matter of getting them here in the first place. Part of that, I think, is, as I said, it's, one, is we've gotten some benefit, just because there are more people out there now that know we're short of drivers than knew that last week. And we're hopeful that some of them go, may, you know, well, I might be interested in doing that. I received a call today from my wife, who said one of our neighbors read an article in the paper, and said, in fact, she's a former, retired counselor, I don't know her name yet, from Carmel. And so, a retired counselor from Carmel would seem to be an ideal bus driver in terms of background. And so, I'm hopeful that this person will express interest in a position. We've got them.
And it hasn't been by lack of effort by HR. I pushed on them early in the year, and as you can see, they've run ads in the paper, all the newsletters going home, LinkedIn, Twitter, Spotlight, PTO newsletters, Zip Recruiter, Glass Door, Career Builder, Max Recruit, Beyond, so...
At the Expedition.
At the Expedition, yes. So, the word, I got to give HR props, they've got the word out, the challenge is getting them in.
One of the more recent things that we're doing is we're making an effort to see if we can interest some of our current employees to do this. And maybe, and we've done that in transportation. We have some transportation employees that also work in our food service department. What we haven't done is actively try to recruit essentially full-time employees, or other classifications of employees. We're talking to a number of our classified groups, including our instructional assistants, our custodial staff. Not all of our jobs would we be able to, you know, they couldn't be gone, you know, before school starts and right when school was out, but some of our positions can, and in some of these, like our full-time custodial staff, for example, they already have benefits, so that's not an issue. And those that, and we know we have a number of employees that otherwise work full-time for us, and then they work part-time someplace. And so, the thought was, is if you could, you could add a, I hesitate to say part-time, because we don't see our bus drivers as part-time, but just in terms of the traditional eight-hour day, if they were to drive a route in the morning, for example, and that was two hours, that two hours would be right up against their regular job, so they, unlike if they work a second job someplace else where they might go home and then have to be at work at 7:00 at night or something, these additional hours would add right on to the hours that they're working, and depending on their position, for the time spent, the hourly rate is pretty attractive. We know what the responsibility is of being a bus driver, but there's, financially, there's opportunity for some of our employees to significantly increase their annual income if we can make, you know, that schedule and work and so forth.
Mike, Pam.
Go ahead. I'll just move down the line.
I've got, I think, a number of comments and a couple of questions, and so, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Dreyer for coming here this evening, I appreciate his input. I'd also like to thank all of our current bus drivers for all that they do. And on a personal note, it's my opinion that bus drivers and all of our staff are undercompensated for their amount of responsibility that we as a community and we as a state place on them, and we as parents place on them, and we're obviously not here to talk about that, but I do want to put that out there. I would be in favor of amendment that the, the bonus does not apply if a person is currently employed in another school district, so that we aren't poaching off of those people. I do think that the publicity that we received has been good. This is a, to me, potentially a current crisis, and I am concerned about long-term, and I think we do need to look at if giving benefits, what are there ways that we can do to keep our bus drivers longer and get new bus drivers? I think this is not just a problem for Carmel Clay Schools, obviously, it's a problem for all districts. There was something that I recently read, that a lot of districts are losing people to coach jobs, where you could, like Dr. Wells already said, where it's a full-time job, where it's potentially less stressful, where it's not year-round, I mean, it is I am concerned about Roger's potential amendment to kind of differentiate between CDLs, people that have CDLs and don't already at this point, because I think one of the issues is there is a shortage of people that are qualified and have CDLs. And to me, for, to set that aside, I would not think that. I guess my first question really directed to administration is, is this something that we really need to address now as opposed to discussion? And is there really any reason to delay, if we decide to go forward, to delay our approval for another two weeks?
One of the thoughts we had, Roger and I, as we prepared for this... One of the thoughts we had, Roger and I, as we prepared for this, our practice has been obviously not to walk into the board meeting and feel like the five of you have to, you know, put a gun to your head and make a decision today. That, we're not, we're not big on that. We're hopeful we have some direction by the end of this discussion tonight, because it's going to take time to post, and three to four weeks for training. So we'd like to have some general direction on what that would be to post some, so we bring people in. We have three people in training now. Contingent on where this goes with the board, we would suggest whatever incentive we come up with and can agree on to keep people, we would apply it to those three in the hopper right now. We think that'd be appropriate. So we talked about that, you know, and I said to Roger, let's have a chance for discussion. This is a new item, but unfortunately, it's emerging right now, and, um, that allows us to get this posted and start to recruit people in there, because it's going to take three or four weeks before they can get behind a wheel anyway, because the value and the sensitivity of taking care of these kids in a bus, so that will give us some direction.
And I, I, as I, I went that through my notes. One of the things I forgot to say is we need to remember that bus drivers are the first person that students see every day, and they can set the tone to make a day a good day, um, or they can set the tone to make a day a bad day. And just from my experience, standing on the corner, a, a good bus driver is worth their weight in gold just from that two seconds of interaction when the kid gets on the bus. So, um, I think that's important.
Absolutely.
I guess the question I also have is, we can give you direction that we think we're going to do it in two weeks, but then you're still two weeks down the road. So I'll go on record saying I'd be in favor of approving it tonight. I know there's some concern among my fellow board members about the dollar amount. But I don't think we know what got us the publicity that we did, whether it was the amount, whether it's just the concept. And I think we're potentially on a roll. I'd hate to stop that momentum from going forward. And I'm pleased to hear that you've already addressed, this, this is a limited amount. We'll see how it works. And I think we, you know, we need to get over this crisis and do whatever we can do to prevent it from happening next year, which is beyond our control, but to make the position more desirable for people. And I, I believe that we have, you know, a number of our drivers are retired, and that's probably where the insurance comes in and doesn't come in, but we just need to look at that and work together to come up with a solution.
Thanks, Mike.
Pam. Thank you. Um, yes, um, initially, when we started talking about this, um, there weren't two, um, solutions to the problem. $1,000 to the, those in training without the CDL, and then $2,500 to those who have one. We also were not given a cap, so we weren't aware that this was going to end at any certain time because we're, I mean, this, initially, this seemed like it was going to go on for quite a while. So I appreciate the cap. Um, if that was $2,500 to, uh, all of those who were, are hired, that would be about 14 drivers.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay. Personally, I think that the $2,500 is a bit high. I'm also basing that on the fact that the performance grant that we're going to be giving teachers, um, I think the teachers are going to be getting 1,500 for that. So in other words, the bonus that we're giving bus drivers is more than we would be giving teachers in their performance. And I realize teachers have a full-time job, but I don't think that that amount, that, the amount we're giving to the bus drivers should be more than we're offering to the teachers. That's one.
Just for clarity, we don't control the performance grant.
I understand that, but it's still a bonus that they're looking toward.
Right.
Right, so that's, they consider that their bonus.
Oh, I get that. I'm just saying you're not, you, the board, are not controlling that. That's state given.
Right, but it's still an amount that we're going to give to teachers.
No, I get that.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, I don't want anybody to think the board is controlling that, because you're, because you're not.
No.
That wouldn't be fair to the board.
No, it's not coming from us.
Correct.
Right. And I, uh, initially, I've been going through all these questions in my mind. A new driver would be considered anybody who takes a contract with the corporation from now on, right? It, whether you have a, the license to drive or not, and whether we're going to train them.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
My intent would be is that it would be, they would be eligible for this if they're.
No matter what.
Yeah, I mean, even, even if they work for us already, but not as a bus driver. If they, the idea is, is if you've not been a bus driver, and we're going to hire you now to be a bus driver, wherever you come from.
For instance, if you're an IA, and we recruit you into bus driving, you'd get this.
Right, but I mean, if they have, they already have that license to drive, then they would still be a new driver.
Yes.
Yes.
Which.
Okay.
Yes.
Then benefits, we said, we, I know that those stopped because I'm aware of that. But is there anything that comes to the bus drivers through Obamacare at this time?
Yes, um, since we discontinued benefits, um, with the Affordable Health Care Act, if any of our employees averaged 30 hours a week, uh, and a number of our bus drivers do, uh, if they don't, they could, by driving a regular route and then also take, doing field trips. And, or in some cases, also working, you know, we, as I said earlier, they may work in food service in addition to driving a bus. So, um, unlike what it was in previous years, employees have access to health insurance. Now, not under any condition. If they don't, if they work five hours a week, for example, they don't, but. But if they average 30 hours a week, and the summer's excluded from that, in other words, it's treated as though they work all summer, even though, even if they don't. So, so, um, they need to work about 1,100 or so hours a year, uh, which a standard, you know, eight-hour day year-round would be 2,080 hours. So, um, any employee in the country that, that averages about 1,100 hours is, um, or at least our employees. I'm not sure that would be true if you, if you were in a profession where, you know, it was 12 months a year, but, because they'd have to be 30 hours a week. But for us in education, um, our employees, we offered Affordable Health Care Act benefits, um, this, this year, for 14, 15, um, at about a little over 1,100 hours.
Okay. And as I was going through this in my mind, um, I know, um, I was wondering if we think we could lose bus drivers over this because we're now offering an incentive, which we didn't offer at the beginning of the year, to people who were hired then, and they're probably saying to themselves, well, why didn't I get the bonus, and how come, you know, could they, could they quit and want to be rehired so that now they're new? I don't know.
They could.
They could.
But I'd think long and hard before we would do that in spite of our shortage. I would like to think, and I know that's an issue with, with some drivers and some, you know, I think it's, you know, some human nature. I would have expected that reaction for some folks, that, um, nobody wants to be just on the other side of a line, wherever you draw the line. You know, we've got drivers like the two sitting out here that have, that have been excellent drivers for years, and very dedicated employees, and, and, um, and so they see the new person coming in and they're given this bonus, and, you know, they're not getting a bonus, and they're, you know, as I said earlier, you know, then these are two good examples, I suspect. If they, if they could help us, they would, and they, they would have, and, um, so I'm, you know, I'm not surprised by that, and, and, uh, I, I think that's natural. And now whether they would quit over it or not is, you know, I, I don't know. Um, I would hope not, certainly. I think that, again, we're in this situation where, you know, we're not recommending this because we're wanting to favor one person over the other. We're simply trying to get kids back and forth to school in a safe way, and, and, um, so we're, as I said, we're open to, uh, you know, some way to get that done. And, and this is one of the ways we think may, may have an impact. But it's also a way that if it doesn't, we can stop anytime, uh, we can cap it. We can see it as a, as kind of a one-time expense to see, see how it goes, and we may come back and say, this was kind of, it didn't work, or, or it did, and, but we don't need to either offer it anymore, or we don't need to offer as much. We just don't know. So whatever the other opinion is, I'm not saying they're wrong. I don't, you know, I don't know either. I'm just saying I would like to see us do something. And, and, and we'll, I think fairly shortly, we'll find out whether it made any difference. But, but we won't risk, you know, half a million dollars or something to, and then determine. And so as we talk about increasing salaries, uh, if we find that doesn't make, I mean, we'd all like to have more money, so I'm not saying it won't make any difference in terms of, you know, people would appreciate that. But in terms of filling a shortage, if it doesn't have an impact, you can't very well go back and say, you know, change your mind, so.
Well, in the paper today, it said that we have enough drivers to complete the 180 routes. It's, that's what it says. Now, I want to know if that's true.
No, it's not true.
Okay.
That's where it lasts, the two days last week, uh, after we had everybody employed by us that has, that's qualified, that has a driver's, you know, um, commercial driver's license and, and bus driver training, we still ran three drivers short of being able to drive all the buses that we needed to drive, have driven.
Okay, so.
In essence, we have no wiggle room for somebody.
Have we thought about hiring, uh, a permanent substitute driver? Like we've talked about hiring permanent subs in the buildings.
Part of the staffing includes about 10 so-called permanent substitutes. That's why I was saying earlier, transfer, we can't operate, um, the busing operation with, with call-in substitutes because they're not out there. And with very, we, over the years, we'll have maybe somebody that was a fireman or something, and they'll, they will want, be willing to do that. But for the most, we, we can't staff that way, so we, we, we would like to have, we try to maintain about 10, I believe, uh, so-called permanent drivers where they're coming in every day, um, and they're driving routes for people that are absent. And, uh, and of course, that's not an exact science, so sometimes you need 11 or 12, and sometimes you only needed eight or six. But we, we really feel we must do that and have, have all, have done that for long as I remember, because you simply can't call somebody at 5:00 in the morning and, and they're, they're going to come in and be a substitute bus driver.
Have we thought about maybe giving an incentive to a bus driver who brings in bus drivers?
Yep, and, uh, the last time we, we, uh, come up with that bright idea, I think it was mine. I got a call from one of my counterparts, you know, next door, because one of our drivers was, got a list of their drivers and was personally calling and recruiting. So Mike, if you're concerned about hiring a bus driver, you'd really be concerned about that. And so, uh.
That's one of the questions I asked last week.
We didn't recommend that this time.
Well, just coming up with some ideas here. And you said it takes three to four weeks to get a bus driver ready, and they're not doing any driving of any routes at that time?
Not, no, they're not. I mean, not, just, it's a part of their training. They have to eventually drive, kind of like driver's training for anybody. They have to drive the bus at some point with a, with a, another, with a licensed bus driver, and, but not actually running the route by, to where they're helping us any.
Okay.
Until after they're fully licensed and, and fully qualified.
Okay, so, um, and I was also thinking, you know, in order, because in the paper, it talks about, um, we've lost 25 drivers since May. So, um, is there any thought to, like you said, adding money to the middle step? So that there's an incentive to move to, to at least somewhere, uh, because there's only six steps on the bus driver.
Again, we're not losing them, and we're not losing, once they get here, that's not why we're losing them. We're not, I mean, we're not losing them because of, you know, the step or the, or the, or the salary. And, and the context of the 25 since May, first, we have turnover, um, and retirees, and, and given the demographics of the, of the drivers that we have, um, I would say that we have a, uh, but probably more, a higher number of retirees in this employee classification than we would say in our instructional assistants, for example. And so some, you know, we've got retirees, uh, we, we have, unfortunately, we have some that will, uh, have medical issues that they can no longer drive, and keep in mind that, you know, when you're driving a bus, you have to pass physical and meet all those physical requirements. And then just, you know, a typical kind of turnover, so, um, out of a base of roughly 180, you know, the 25 since May is not, it's not like it's an abnormally high turnover, uh, for that employee group. I don't, I don't know that it's, I don't, I don't think this year, the turnover was particularly, you know, a lot higher than it has been. That's just the amount of turnover, but it's.
The challenge, back to the economic thing, is to get replacements in. I know we had this experience of bus shortage drivers, uh, right before the 2008 recession, because the economy was booming. Then the recession hit, we had drivers galore. But it was, it was crisis time in 2005, '06, and '07, just to get drivers in. I can remember that distinctly. And then eight hit, because they have options.
Right.
So this is, unfortunately, it's a, a good economic indicator is when you have a hard time getting substitute teachers and bus drivers. Usually means your economy's doing pretty well. I've seen that a couple of times in my career, and now we're, we're at it big time now.
And because of the training requirements and that, and the timeframe and so forth, we can kind of have some, I'd say, bad luck and have, um, two or three drivers that, uh, that it's necessary for them to take a long-term leave. And then kind of like, all of a sudden, you need three drivers and it takes you a month to get them ready, even if you've got the applicant. And so by the time you find somebody that A is interested and we think is qualified to become a driver, you've, you've got this more or less month to, uh, react to a vacancy. And, um, and of course, what happens is, is the first ones that go are those permanent subs, and then instead of 10, you've got nine or eight or seven, and then pretty soon you don't have any. If you, if you, you know, if you can't keep up with, with, with it. And, um, but as I said, it's, it, it is not the daily rate that we're paying that we think will, unless we spend enormous amounts of money, and, and even if you thought that was a great idea, as you know, that, you know, our transportation fund is capped, and, and like most of our other funds, we don't have unlimited funds. And, and it's not a matter, I mean, you have to have, you either have to have a certain number of bus drivers, or at some point you reduce services to, to parents. And you can have, you can have longer ride times, you can have longer, further walk to the bus. Some of our neighbors have gone to a program where they don't go into, into subdivisions. They only pick up at the main road, not, not only because they couldn't get bus drivers, I mean, first, they didn't have the money because of circuit breaker. So, so, um, some of the ideas, you know, from the financial aspect, um, even if they were great, we couldn't, we wouldn't have the money to do it. And again, because, you know, we try to do the best we can as we, when it comes time for raises and so forth. We're certainly not trying to just accumulate money in our transportation fund. So, so, uh, we put it, the money that we have, pretty much right back in, in the operation, which means to the drivers and, and, and the salaries. But you, other than those choices to reduce services, um, you need a certain amount of bus drivers. You know, this is a district that years ago, we didn't have walk zones. Now, I'm not recommending eliminating walk zones. I'm just point, using it as an example that, that when you have walk zones, you don't need as many bus drivers. And, uh, or if you have, uh, children walk out to the main road from a subdivision and have fewer bus stops, it'll, and, or, and/or if you have longer ride times, all, all those will contribute to, um, essentially, it's just saying, you know, less service, less bus drivers. So, um, we've not, um, we're not proposing that, and we haven't resorted to that. But in the end. But in the end, those are the only choices.
I just...the last comment I have is that I feel like if we do this, that we are starting to set a precedent, that if we have shortage areas, no matter where they are, that we could be offering bonus pay. So I don't want to see us go down that road either.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Fortunately, that's, you know, we've not had that. And whether that would be, you know, a solution for, you know, a different group of employees, you know, I wouldn't know. I mean, I think each one...each situation would stand on its own in terms of what the solution might be.
I guess in terms of services, I have a question that I...it's not really apropos to this, but I think it's more apropos to the long-term transportation issue. In terms of students, do we have a seat for every student on a bus? Or do we adjust that based upon knowing that so many kids are going to get dropped off? And is there an opportunity into the future to maybe have a system that tightens that up by requiring an app or something that would say, "I'm riding the bus this week," or "next week," or is there...you know, is that not a possibility, or do we already do something like that?
Well, what we do is we staff...we load the bus, basically, based on some, you know, experience. At the high school, for example, we may assign 130 kids to a bus, because we know from experience that half of them will ride the bus. The challenge is, is that when we have bad weather, that's when you'll decide not to drive your child to school, and/or you won't let them drive themselves. And so we also have to recognize that and include that in our...in loading the bus, essentially. Having said that, state statute says that the capacity on the bus is equal to three students in a seat. Now, that means 12 inches per kid. So if you're in elementary school or kindergarten, that, you know, that's reasonably manageable. But if you're, you know, senior in high school, or even secondary period, even getting them that close is a problem, even if they could fit on the seat. So we try to avoid that, but there will be any...on any given day, there will be a bus that...we don't load a bus and expect that all the seats are going to have three kids on them, is what I'm saying. But on those bad weather days and so forth, there will be more seats that will have three kids on them than there were the day before, and that's kind of how we manage that. And that's how every school district that I'm aware of manages. So it's not so much who's going to ride the bus today, because whether you ride it or not, I mean, we can't...couldn't change the route, you know, that quickly, so...
Another question. Do we have any information on other school corporations, even around the country, that have tried incentives, and how that might have worked for them?
We don't have a lot of information. Some of our neighbors have offered incentives, and best of my knowledge, they haven't limited it to, you know, to only drivers that are unemployed, essentially, because there are probably not a whole lot of those out there, which would be a concern, Mike. Although I appreciate, you know, we're not interested in upsetting all of our neighbors. At the same time, we will not have been the first district to offer incentives in Hamilton County. And some of our neighbors, we...as I said, we rarely are losing bus drivers, but we just lost one last week, because there was a change in the family situation, and this driver needed benefits. And so our neighbors didn't have any problem hiring our driver, and I'm glad they did, because I know this person needed benefits, and I wouldn't want to stand in their way. And so there's a balance there. And I, again, if we...which is another reason for the cap. If we had, you know, if we fill all 12 of these positions with drivers from our neighbors, that would concern me, too. And I'm sure it would concern our neighbors. And so...but the fact is, is that it is a marketplace economy, and you see it in nursing professions, for example. And we're not wanting to disadvantage others, but my first responsibility is to try to get the kids in Carmel to school. And if that became an issue, we'd be sensitive to that. As I said, we wouldn't just keep that going if it became such an issue that, you know, I mean, that wouldn't be our intent.
So when our neighbor districts did offer these incentives, did it help them with their short-term difficulty?
I don't...I've not heard that they...I've not heard the specifics, so I don't know. And they did offer...I don't know exactly...I thought I heard Noblesville, I believe, had offered like $700. And now they're...you know, they...all of us have different...some different pay schedules, but I think we've shared with some of our neighbors. But...
And...go ahead. And I can really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you...all five of you have considered on this, because many of the discussions that we're having, Roger and I have had leading up to this, but the fact of the matter is, we have a short-term challenge, non-permanent solution, as we say, to attract more candidates into bus driving. And we, coming into this meeting, have no interest to poach from HSE, or Noblesville, or anybody, you know. When we go to these legislative meetings, we talk about being public school advocates. You know, Tricia and I this year, and Pam and I last year, we mean that. I don't see any interest in doing anything to our neighbors. So I'd have no problem putting a clause in there that does not apply to poaching from other...and I mean that, because, no, I mean, that's not going to be our long-term solution either.
Well, if you've got drivers that have been trained in another district, and they see that we're going to give them $2,500 for that training, why wouldn't you leave?
Well, that's a challenge.
But if we put a clause in there that's not applicable, that does mean that we are...we mean what we say. And I think that's fine.
I mean, I'm looking back at the recommendation, and it says to be given to new bus drivers. So based upon this discussion, I'm confident that we will not hire 12 from Hamilton Southeastern or 12 from someplace else, but that the incentive is to get new bus drivers. And I would move that we vote on tonight to approve the recommendation of a signing bonus of $2,500 to be given to new bus drivers effective immediately as an incentive to recruit and retain new drivers. The bonus will be paid three months after the driver completes training, provided that they're in good standing on September 15th.
Now, I'm a little confused. If I can ask a question about the 20...is it $2,500 for one that comes that needs trained, or...
He just...
I just...I didn't qualify it that way, whether they need trained or not trained. I mean, if they're trained, the bonus we get is they start day one.
Yes.
And so to me, I pay them...I think it's worth paying them the...I mean, I...I guess it's the reverse way, because if they come on day one, we're paying them $2,500. If they come untrained, we're paying to train them, not money in their pocket.
Right.
And it's costing us more. I would not draw the distinction in my motion.
Would you mind adding a cap to that?
Oh, with a cap, that it be $35,000, not to exceed $35,000.
Thank you.
I think there are still questions on the table and some discussion. Go ahead, Kathy.
I would feel much more comfortable about this if it was more like in Pam's $1,500 range. I also would like to see some, not only a cap, but also that this is a short-term push that would be effective April 15th, so that we don't stretch this out until September. Still looking for people...if it works, it's going to work between now and the end of the year. And if they don't sign by April 15th, they're not going to be ready to drive this year anyway. And the other thing I would like to do is, I would like to offer some kind of incentive to our current bus drivers, if they do, in fact, bring someone new to us. Not recruiting from other school districts, but in fact, if they bring someone in, and they...because they know people, and they probably would know who suited for the job. And I feel really bad about...I just...I feel like it's going to create a lot of hard feelings. It's not our equity thing.
Okay, I have some questions, but I will be brief. If they come to the district with their CDL license, when do they start driving our buses and our kids?
I would... I believe they would start pretty much immediately. And I think an issue is, is that we do, from time to time, have a driver, for whatever reason, that will come ready to drive. And they may be from another district, just as we, you know, we'll have a teacher come and be employed in other districts. So I appreciate the poaching concern. I have that same concern, but I'm also concerned if we, you know, if we have a driver from Indianapolis or someplace that, for whatever reason, decides they want to come here, they may move here. I mean, I...again, that's typically...that's not...we've not hired very many drivers that meet that definition. But I suppose we wouldn't be excluded from hiring them, but we'd be excluded from, you know, giving them a bonus.
Well, that wasn't in Mike's motion.
Okay, so...
They're still considered a new driver, right?
Yes.
So when we define new driver, it's new driver to Carmel, or...
That was...
That was in Mike's...I mean, that's the motion I'm referencing.
Okay.
Could you define good standing for me? Does it include absenteeism? How are we defining good standing by September 15th?
We would...we have a standard already that we have probationary employees, not necessarily for bus drivers, but as a school district, we have a concept that for the first 60 days, you're in a probationary status. And during...in this case, during that 60 to 90 days, we would assess them and share that assessment with them. And it would be, you know, it would either result in an acceptable standard, or it would be less than that. So if it was anything less than that, and they were either...we would note that they would be in a probationary status, or a, you know, needed improvement kind of status, then this would not qualify. And we'd be very specific with them, both when we offered them a job, and also that's the process that we would follow.
Does absenteeism fit into that?
Yes.
Okay. So what the original proposal...and it's not necessarily even a proposal right now, because it's a discussion. But for discussion, your recommendation is $2,500 if they come to the district with a CDL license, $1,000 if they require training.
That was in the...
There's a motion on the table that has not been seconded. So I guess I'm...we're not really having discuss...I mean, I guess I'm moving it from the discussion part of the agenda with my motion. If the motion is seconded, then we can have discussion, and then we vote on that motion.
There's a motion on the table. All in favor...or, Meg, get a second. Meg, get a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I would like to amend that motion. And this is just pulling some things together I've heard, so...what might be supported might not. My amendment would be to...I'll get the wording right here, to offer a signing bonus of $1,500 to new bus drivers, effective immediately, with a cap of $35,000 total payment. Bonus is paid at the three months. And I'm not sure how to word this, but I would also be interested in a bonus to a current bus driver who would refer someone who actually then signs up. You know, who actually gets to the point who achieves the bonus, not just a list of names.
No, you didn't have an amount, did you?
$1,500.
For the...
For the recruiting bonus?
Yeah.
I mean, I can throw something out there, $500. I hear from...I'll throw out $500.
Are you... Are you six?
Yes, with all the...
Same timeline.
Right.
Same timeline.
And can you clarify the $1,500? That is across the board for everyone.
For CDL-certified and non-CDL certified?
For new drivers.
Right.
Okay.
And when we say three months, we mean three months of physically driving the bus. So if they need to be trained, which might take three to four weeks, their time clock starts the time with which they are driving our student, so it's three months from that point.
I can keep September 15th on it.
As you say, but would you be...are you keeping the September 15th date as well?
Yes.
Timeline. Same timeline.
And the cap, same timeline, same cap.
Yep.
But $1,500 as the bonus, and a $500 incentive to our current bus drivers to help pull the team together.
May I get a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I guess...so what if we had a principal or a teacher that recruited someone, or you're going to...your motion's not to pay them $500? I'm just throwing it out there. Why are we limiting that? And not necessarily that I'm in favor of it, but you're limiting that to drivers, current bus drivers, as I guess kind of a finder's fee? And I don't know that that's the advantage. And then we're also...we're not distinguishing whether they've got a CDL or don't. We're just lowering the recommendation amount. Is that...
I'm not distinguishing, I'm just lowering to be more in line with other things. And I think your point's well-taken about whoever could bring that name forward, because our priority is to get bus drivers ready to go in the route. So I think that's a very good point in there. And I could amend the amendment if you wanted to. You just let me know, Leila.
Well, let's discuss that further. What are the thoughts of the rest of the board on the incentive to just buzz...I mean, we heard what Mike just had to say.
I mean, I raised it more not to do it. I mean, I think that we're at the point where we've got as much free publicity as we're going to get. It obviously doesn't, you know, hurt to have people, you know, saying, "Oh, well, why don't you do it? Why don't, you know, you do it? I think it'd be a great job for you." But I don't know that that's, in my opinion, the best use of our money. You know, all you have to do is open the classified ads for employees, and all you're going to see is truck-driving companies paying signing bonuses for truck drivers. And I don't want to necessarily make that comparison, just like I wouldn't make the comparison that the performance...for performance bonus that teachers are getting. I mean, they're two, to me, unfair comparisons to make. But like Roger said at the beginning, from my perspective, I'd rather...nobody knows if it's $1,500 or $2,500. I'd rather, with a cap, err on the high side, so that we get it done, as opposed to in two months, we come back and say, "Okay, it worked for five employees. How are we going to get the next five bus drivers? Would we want to increase it again?" And I don't know that that's going to happen, but I'd rather...I don't like the word "starting high," but that we have a cap, and we have a number that we need, that we know what we need. And again, that's...to me, the $1,500, it's better than $700, is it's $2,500? I don't know. I understand the thought that teachers are making...are getting less of a bonus, but I just don't think that's a fair comparison. And we need to...I mean, I don't know what...why the news...why the Star, or why Channel 6 picks...pick this up, if it's the $2,500, where they're thinking, "Wow, Carmel is, you know, throwing all this money out there." To me, the important thing is if it gets the job done, it gets the job done, and that we need to come up with a long-term, as much as possible, a long-term solution to at least trying to minimize this happening again, which we can't...we can't control the economy. All we can control is what we can control.
Roger, do our bus drivers, on average, make $100 a day? So $500 would be a week's pay. So we'd be giving them...
Pretty much, yeah. They range from about $100 to $104. So there's not a...
Okay.
There's...unlike some of our employee groups, there's not a huge... some of our employee groups, there's not a huge spread from the, kind of the top to the bottom.
So fifteen hundred would essence, they get a three-week, a three-week bonus, or a four or a five-week bonus? Okay. Kathy?
The, one of the reasons, because if we're looking at this as a short-term fix, that's one of the reasons I threw out, you know, if they sign before April fifteenth, because it puts a definite, we can see if this experiment works. If we don't have ten people sign up by the end of the school year even, then probably it wasn't that effective. So not only do we have a dollar cap on, but we have a timeline where we say, okay, we tried it, we need to look at Plan B at the end, at such and such a date. Because if we don't have the ten people, then they're not going to come. Does that make sense?
Roger, do you have a timeframe that you would consider?
One of the things I would say on the timeframe, I appreciate what you're saying, Kathy, I don't, what I don't know is if, you know, kind of the hiring season is maybe more in the summer, like teachers, that, you know, we're hiring a lot more teachers, and they're a lot more available before school starts than they are in the middle of a year. If you're an existing driver, you know, you're, some may be interested in coming here next school year, but may not be interested if they're already, if they're driving someplace, leaving, you know, I think a number of our drivers would, you know, they would, they might be, I think they would be hesitant to leave us to go somewhere else this time of the year, because they are conscientious, and they, they would, they wouldn't want to just, they would wait, I think, some of them would wait. So I don't know if we, that the timeframe would necessarily reflect that it's, you know, either not working or not making any difference. But I would certainly think by April, we'd have some better sense than I do now as whether we're even thinking this is worthwhile. If I might make a comment on the referral bonus, it is a matter of, we will get all kinds of things. Somebody will, you know, recommend their spouse, and then do we pay them five hundred dollars? And if they, I am concerned, now I am concerned about the poaching concept, if they actively go, you know, recruit, we would not be intending to do that. And we wouldn't, you know, but if you put an incentive out there that kind of everything's, you know, fair game, then now if it was a referral for somebody that's never driven a bus, that would kind of eliminate that. One of the recommendations from, I think, as I said earlier, either from one of our own employees or the, or one of our administrative employees in transportation or the driver was to consider the current incentive, you know, attendance incentive. We might, you know, might do something where from between, now, if we started now and said if, you know, drivers had some, you know, some kind of an attendance between now and the end of school year even, just as, again, as an interim thing, that said, we'll double the incentive if you're, you might, we pay it by semester, so we're partially into the second semester, but if we said from this point forward for the rest of the semester, if you haven't missed yet, you know, we'll double the incentive for, you know, perfect attendance and, we also provide a lesser amount if they miss, what, one or two days, I think. And so we could increase that, perhaps double it, realize, and we make it clear, you know, this is not necessarily something that's going to be forever, but between now and the end of the year. And because again, sometimes, you know, obviously people, you know, when they get sick, they're sick, but sometimes, you know, they have some personal days that are available to them, and sometimes, I mean, the sick day may be for doctor's appointment, and we already have, again, some, we've called, they've volunteered to, you know, to reconsider their time off because we didn't have a substance, they'll change their doctor's appointment as it is. And I think that would be appropriate to, as perhaps a way of recognizing what some of the drivers do to try to be here, you know, every day.
Well, I would definitely consider that. I mean, part of my thought was, in that motion was, to not only recruit drivers for our need, but to make sure that the driver employee group is not splintered.
Yes.
That they have some control and stake in the game as, all working together too. So that would be another way to, to put that back in a bus driver's control.
That might be a way where they, you know, it would reflect, you know, our recognition and appreciation if they, if they were able to maintain the attendance. Again, we've already got that in place, it would be just a matter of whether we, you know, kicked it up and increased, in a sense, that would be the, that's also, that's another incentive for our, that we currently have for our existing employees.
What is the current incentive?
I don't know, because we've got them for most all of our classified employees, but it varies depending on their, you guys remember how much? Probably, it might be like a hundred and fifty for, and then three hundred if they have perfect attendance, maybe. And then half that much otherwise. So, yeah, so a hundred and fifty. For the rest of this year, they already, they currently have potential to gain a hundred and fifty dollars if they don't miss any days, and seventy-five if they miss, what, probably one or two, maybe, one? One. So even if we doubled that, it'd be, you know, it'd be three hundred instead.
Should we be more generous?
Can. You can be as generous as you want. You're not going to overpay them, so.
What we currently have on the table is fifteen hundred dollars to all drivers, all new drivers to Carmel. We have a cap of thirty-five thousand. We have a bonus after three months of driving. We have, they need to be in good standing and employed by, on September fifteenth of two thousand sixteen. And we have a five hundred dollar current driver incentive bonus. Things that, a referral, referral bonus, yes. What has been suggested would be a time cap, which we've not acted on, increasing the attendance incentive for current bus drivers, which has not been acted on either, both of which. I've got one other question, to be honest with you, about the referral bonus, or not the referral bonus, I'm so sorry, the, the time cap. I know we, it was suggested perhaps making that April. Would, because we still have this, you know, the thirty-five thousand dollar cap, would it be more effective? We've made that by, say, July fifteenth, because that would give us a month to train and for drivers to, to be ready to work by the time students are back in school? Or just eliminate any kind of a time cap for the program?
My recommendation would be not to have a time cap if, if there was, even though, you know, if you authorize thirty-five thousand, we're not just going to spend it if we don't think it's doing anything. We, I'd rather not have a timeframe and keep the dollar cap and, because I don't know all the things that may happen between, you know, somebody that deals with this every day will have more insight to it, and I would hate to pick a date, and then they go, well, that's, here's a reason why that's probably not a good idea. If we have the dollar cap, then, as I said, if we, we got to a point in June or whatever that said, either A, we don't need to continue this regardless, or we don't need to continue because we're not seeing any change and enough to make it, we got the point and thought we're incentivizing people that would, that would have applied in any way, then, you know, we'd be the first to come back and say, we think we ought to discontinue the program.
And you would bring a report back to us later on in the year?
Yes. Yes, for sure.
I would say, and the other, the other item that we were discussing as well was increasing the fifteen hundred dollar amount. That, so I guess those are the three things to consider at this point.
So, suggestion on that current attendance incentive for existing drivers today, for the remainder of this year, triple that for them.
Well. So if they had perfect attendance, then they would get, what, four hundred?
Four fifty.
Or four fifty instead of a hundred and fifty, and that would be just the second semester, then we'd, unless you, unless we recommend, and you extended it, it would go back to what it is now next year.
Well, I guess in terms of that, the thirty-five thousand dollars was based on twenty-five hundred incentive.
Yes.
So.
Or a combination, actually, but.
A combination, so the cap is going to be, the cap would still be, what we're talking about would be, the cap would still be the same. And I'm assuming, I mean, I'm assuming, you're working the numbers, I mean, how many bus drivers we would be tripling? Because in essence, it's one pot, right? So if.
I wasn't thinking of it as one pot.
Okay, and I guess that's, I mean, I guess that's the question, are we considering it as one, I mean, I want to, my thought is, I want to reward the bus drivers that have stepped up.
Right.
And carried more of their, done more, and necessarily tying that to perfect attendance or missing one day, you know, might not be the most appropriate way to do that. And maybe if the, if there's, and again, and maybe here's the first question, does it make sense to, this was on discussion, does it make sense to let you guys come back with a new proposal in two weeks? Or would you rather hammer part of it out or some of it out?
I second.
I'd hammer it all out if you can.
You want to get, I mean, if you want to get it done, let's get it done, I mean.
Otherwise, we're going to also have, you know, hearsay and so forth.
I mean, here, my thought would be.
And all kinds of things that might.
My thought would be, is if we're going to lower the number to fifteen hundred, let's do a cap of fifteen hundred times fourteen slots, and then let's give you guys two weeks to come back with a way to reward or incentivize our drivers that have stepped up and gotten us through this crisis, and that will continue to get us through this crisis, because that's something that, obviously, we've not really thought, you've not had the chance to think about until now. So that would be my recommendation. And again, I guess we're just in discussion, so there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. It can, I guess it can be withdrawn, or it can be voted on. And I'm not a Roberts rule guy, I want to get it done.
Okay. My question for the administration, we have in our bylaws that we will not act unless it's an emergency, and it's been shared with us in advance, that we will not take action on any item in our discussion until it's been brought to a second meeting. So I feel very uncomfortable taking action now, because to me, it's a surprise, it's not what I was intending. And I do want to know from the administration, how time-sensitive, I mean, I know you've explained that we need drivers now. How time-sensitive can this wait until our workshop? And we typically don't take action, but we can.
Right, we take action on personnel at the workshop, as you guys know. And again, our intent tonight was, it's under discussion for a reason, because this emerged, and my intent was to have, just what we're having, discussion on it, because this doesn't happen every year. And it's, and I appreciate discussion, it's focused on getting kids to school and taking care of the people that do that, so thank you. So to be prudent, it probably would be of best interest for us just to come back in two weeks with this a little bit more spit-shine, because the discussion's been excellent. And appreciate the discussion on taking care of our existing drivers. We all appreciate that.
Okay, with that being said, Meg, get a motion on the table to remove the current motion, table this, and keep in discussion, and bring it back at our next meeting as an action item. Discussion? Okay, discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Moving right along, legislative update, Mrs. Hackett.
Let me locate it.
I know, I'm like, okay.
Yes, bills continue to make their way through the legislative process. And I did give an update two weeks ago, but there has been some changes, so I'll, and a couple of points to clarify, so I'll hit that tonight. The first legislative priority for the Carmel Clay School District addresses equitable and adequate funding for public education. One B, and do we have the slide to go up there? Might be easier for people. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks. With regard to Priority One B, I reported last meeting that House Bill eleven sixty-three and Senate Bill two seventy-nine provide for some options for extending or renewing a referendum. I double-checked with people that know more of this than I do, and these are the two bills to watch, so we'll continue to watch them. They've made no progress since two weeks ago, or of any substance. Under Priority One C, House Bill twelve eighty-seven, that was authored by, which is authored by Kethar Richardson, includes several proposals dealing with local public questions to be voted on, and this includes referendum ballots. All the provisions in this bill have to do with public questions taken after December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. So if this language remains unchanged, this would not affect a Carmel referendum vote taken in the spring or fall of two thousand seventeen, but it would affect any possible referendum ballots in the future. So keep that in mind with that bill. And she did mention something to that, I think, the last legislative breakfast, that it looked like she would have to limit what her original thoughts. Addressing Priority One F, House Bill thirteen oh three, authored by Tony Cook, and Senate Bill two fifty-nine, authored by Raiz, both remove the expiration date for school corporations' ability to pay utilities and certain insurance from the Capitol Projects Fund. Nothing is a done deal until the last day of the session, but this one looks pretty sure, as far as things can be sure. Our second legislative priority emphasizes student testing that better meets student and teacher needs, which tends to be more of a formative test, but while also meeting state and federal requirements. House Bill eleven fourteen begins to deal with a more effective state test by replacing I-Step program testing with the Indiana Student Achievement Testing Program, or ISAT, for school years beginning after June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. This bill tasks the Department of Ed with the development and the implementation of this ISAT program. So obviously, there are no specifics. I think what this bill does is just in line with Nick and I are hearing from our legislators and what other people read about and hear from other forms of communication, that this session will be used to hit on short-term fixes needed for I-Step scoring and things like that, and that next session, the long session, will be used more for a, whatever is ended up doing with the I-Step, that, you know, a bigger, a bigger fix than a long-term fix. So I think what this is doing is just keeping it in the forefront in people's, in front of people's eyes. But something to keep an eye on. And then on a related note, as probably everyone has heard, House Bill ten oh three, authored by Benning, and Senate Bill two hundred, authored by Cruz, Kenley, and Mishler, were signed into law by Governor Pence last Thursday, and that means that teachers, because of teacher evaluations, and schools, because of accountability grades, will be held harmless with any drop in I-Step plus scores from this past year only. And then our third CCS legislative priority addresses to transportation-related issues. With regard to Priority Three A, House Bill ten eighty, authored by Thompson, House Bill eleven oh nine, authored by Houston, Senate Bill thirty-four, authored by Lanain, and Senate Bill three twenty-nine, authored by Mishler, all provide for a permanent fix for school corporations to allocate certain circuit breaker credits proportionally under certain circumstances. Unfortunately, Senate Bill three twenty-nine, the last one I mentioned, raises the required loss to twenty percent before the fund is made whole, but in general, the General Assembly has a lot of support for this area. So again, I think something of benefit will go pass, will pass on that. And then addressing Priority Three B, Senate Bill ninety-three, authored by Cruz, simplifies school bus pickup and drop-off locations, limiting them to already established points on the public school corporation's regular bus route, so that what's safe for a child attending one school or type of school is safe for a child attending another school or type. one school or type of school is safe for a child attending another school or type of school. And then two weeks ago, I did include, kind of a section of my report, related areas to watch, and I did include two things underneath that. In the news, are continued calls for third-party rescore of 2015 I-Step plus scores, however, with an estimated cost now of a complete rescore of being $8 million to $10 million. A partial rescore is now being looked at, one that emphasizes rescoring the open-ended testing questions that were more apt to be affected by the latest scoring glitch. And this bill that was brought forth was by Representative Benning that addresses this. That is still moving all over the place. And state lawmakers seem poised to send a very strong message to the Higher Learning Commission, which recently dramatically increased the requirements teachers would need to teach dual-credit courses. The current proposed legislation would waive the tuition teachers would have to pay for these newly required courses, causing a combined revenue loss of almost $3 million to state colleges. That was put forth by Representative Wendy McNamara, and I think that's really interesting. Again, I have no idea where that's going to head, but I think what that says is that this situation is not over and that we'll see a lot more conversation on that and how that plays out. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the legislative update? Okay. Moving right along, we have our policy committee update, and that will be from me. And I'm going to try to do it from the beginning. Okay, I think I'm ready. And I'll try to be brief. I had all sorts of notes and some history, but we're going to just move right along. So, brief, brief, brief history is, in 2012, we decided to have a comprehensive review. 2014, we discontinued using Neola for our policies. Their policies were very comprehensive, more along the lines of administrative guidelines. They were not very timely, and we typically rewritten our policies before they even got us their updates, and they were expensive. So because we currently use council, ISBA now with our membership, they have an entire administrative team that does legislative updates, sends us what needs to be updated as well as suggested policy changes. That's what we've been using the past few years. We have gone through all 250 policies and our 50 bylaws. So to this point, what we are proposing and what you have before you is more of a streamline of our policies. Neola numbered all of our policies. This is a whole Neola template. And Neola also added the same general guidelines and the same general policies for every employee group. When trying to update the policies, it makes it very cumbersome. So our suggestion would be, is to pull out, and you'll see on the -- this slide, to have a whole new policy category called general personnel. And these policies are the policies that appear in every employee group. So our suggestion is to pull all these, consolidate them, and have them be the O-100s general personnel category, where we recognize all of our employees. And this, in essence, really reflects the values and intent of the board and the policies which do allow our employees to really be most efficient and be successful in their positions. In doing this, we also recognize that the way Neola had categorized the different policies were kind of a smattering. We would rather see all of our employees recognized first than moving into our students than our programming. So what you'll see is we have the same setup, the same language that you would see on our first page of our policies, just the added new category and then a change of the ordering. So we recognize our -- all of our employees first for the O-100s. We jump to the 1,000 administrative staff, which does not change. We would change the professional staff currently in our 3,000s, moving that to 2,000s. Classified, which was the 4,000s, moving those to 3,000s. Students, of course, which were 5,000s, moving those to 4,000s. And then moving the programs, which were the 2,000s, all the way behind all of our employees and students. When you -- if you go to page two, we have our general personnel. These are all of the policies that appeared in every category, in every employee group. We have 30 of them. And the one tonight, just so you know, we were going to bring forward 3,600 at our next meeting. That will eventually change to 0600, should we move ahead with this renumbering. Next, you'll see the administrative staff on page three. We have eight that are specific to our superintendent. And we put a gap in there to delineate between which our superintendent -- it doesn't have to appear like that on our policy page, but for our purposes tonight, we gapped it. The first eight are the superintendent. The next 10 are specific to administrative staff. You will notice some of these have an asterisk. These policies do not currently exist for the administrative staff. Neola did not get there yet. But these policies should appear for administrators as well as our professional staff, since they are all teachers. Now, once we pull out the 30 policies that are for all employee groups, we're left with 11 for the professional staff. We aren't changing any policies. These aren't new. These are just the existing policies. And you'll see in parentheses, the ones that need to be duplicated for the administrative That final page reflects the classified staff. There are seven policies that remain after you pull out the 30 that apply to all. And the very last section there, the students, which are the 5,000s, will be re-categorized to the 4,000s. And we do propose changing five of those policy numbers to reflect similar policies. The use of tobacco, dressing grooming, anti-hazing, nondiscrimination, and anti-bullying have parent policies that are also apparent in the employee group, all employee group policies. So we wanted those numbers to align. It would make it far easier when we do administer -- or when we do policy updates. With this, it doesn't require a vote, but we certainly wanted to bring it to discussion if we had questions, if the board had questions, or if the administration had questions from the policy committee. The most important component of this is, once we do decide to have that change, is the communication portion. And so we recognize that we need to send a general email to all the employees. I don't know that people typically go to look at the policies, but if they do, they might be shocked. We will also have a little note on the front page just to explain. This needs to be communicated at the principals' meeting, so they in turn can share that at their building meetings, at the building level. And it really -- it also needs to be shared with the association at their leadership meeting, so they're aware. It's most important to recognize, we aren't adding new policy, we aren't changing policy. We are just renumbering policy and making it more streamlined, so it's user-friendly for all of us. Okay. Questions? Okay, fabulous.
I guess I do have a question. I mean, you said that it doesn't require a vote, but are you changing the numbers? Or are we just having discussion at this point?
We were just -- we would like to change numbers, but we wanted to be sure that the board was aware and that we're on board. It doesn't require a vote because we're not adding any new policies. We're not changing the content and the substance of our policies. We're recodifying.
Okay. I mean, I guess my personal thought is that would take a vote, but I mean, because you're basically -- I mean, it may not be substance. I mean, it's -- you're not changing the substance, but you're changing the format, right? I mean, we're just changing how they're -- I mean, to me, that's something that I would think would need a vote, but I don't. If you determine that it doesn't, and I guess my comments, just based upon your discussion, would be if we're renumbering it, why would we not make students and programs the first to align that our goals are, students are always first? And then my second question, and I don't mean to -- I appreciate all the time that's been spent to get us to this point, but if we're renumbering, why are we having numbers that are .01 when generally those are done when you need to fill in policies between numbers? And I guess that's a question. Is there a reason that we've got 362.01 instead of 363?
Because those policies are related, and those have always been, 362 and 362.01. It was under personnel, it would have been maybe 3,362.01. But those policies were always interrelated, so there have always been the O4s and the O1s, and that's the way Neola had originally given it to us. So we have not renumbered those at all.
It wasn't our intent to make it any more difficult for anybody trying to find policies that they were familiar with. And so we left them, except for the five in the student section, which are completely renumbered, to align with their parent policy. We left them in the order with which they have been the last 15 years. But you make a good point. And we do have a policy meeting in between the two, so we could certainly take a look at that. This isn't time-sensitive. We just wanted to bring this forward as the next step in what we are doing. So we will bring it back. Tricia, do you have any questions, or Kathy?
I'm assuming, have you checked with council on whether or not we need to vote on this? David Day, has he given us any advice?
Well, that's a good question. I guess we will do so. We were told, when you have a substantive change, like if there's a grammar change, we do not bring that before you. We change the is to are, what have you, when we notice things that are erroneous. But we will ask.
My only thoughts for -- I think you've brought this up periodically, just off the cuff, as something that the policy committee looks at now and then and considers. And I have to say, in the past, I was hesitant, because my main thought is, I want the policies to have the easiest to be used, be able to be used the easiest as they can. I'm not saying that exactly right. But the way this is presented, I think it does do just that. Like you said, it makes it easier for policy updates, and I think it makes it easier to use for those trying to use it. So I really appreciate this work. And I have to say, Tamir, what Mike said is, that was the one thought when I looked at it earlier, was the students first as a possibility. So I'll be interested to see what the policy committee thinks when they look through all that with everything else pulled in. But thank you. Nice, nice work.
Kathy?
Well, when I think of policies, I think of these nightly. But they're wonderful policies. I really think of them as guiding, although I think our students are our number-one objective, when we think about the policies, we put those in place so that our employees and everyone are to realize that the students are our number-one objective. So what I like about this, and see if I'm reading this right, if I was hired to be a principal, then all the policies that are in the O-100s would apply to me as well as the administrative staff.
Yes.
So you thin it down to where everyone does the first group, and then you add your different layers. And I think, since there's only five that really pertain to students, because most of that is in administrative policy and student handbooks, right?
They're all in a student handbook, yes.
Yeah. So I'm pretty much okay with where they're at. But I'll go with whichever way you guys go.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that feedback. Any announcements to share? Okay. Well, yes, Kathy?
I just want to take a moment to thank all of you for your support and the cards and prayers and thoughts that came forth when my -- respasting on my stepmother. And it's just really a blessing to work with such a caring group of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. We were happy to be there and our continued support and prayers to your family. With that meeting adjourned.